All right, let's begin then. Welcome, everyone. It's May 13th. We'll begin this evening with the consent agenda from April 8th. Does anyone have any discussion or questions of last meeting's consent agenda? Not? Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a second.
And all in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Aye. All right. Fantastic. Well, welcome again, everyone. This evening, we're joined by Michael Roderick, head of Borrower Services. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Please, take it away.
Perfect. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I'm gonna just go over tonight about some updates since the last time I was with you all back in March of 2024. Seems so long ago.
Your second day, I think.
Yes, yeah, like literally like it was like month two or three like. Um, and yeah. Um, so to get started, some just big updates that have happened in the department since the last time we met. Um, we had three staff leave us for various reasons, but we also had three staff join us. Um, Jackie Jers, Amy Held, and Amanda Tullos have all joined us. Jackie Jers is the new full-time staff that replaced Susan's departure. And then Amy and Amanda are some new part-time staff joining us. Um, and then also, we are going to be having Susan Bunker, who was working with us full-time, join us as a substitute librarian over the summer and going forward. Um, some other big updates. Um, we've been expanding our readers advisory services. Um, that was a big push I discussed last time. Since then, we have been offering a readers advisory book tasting program. We offered the first one back in January of this year. And then the second one is actually going to be this month at the end with a focus on romantic reads. Um, I hosted the first one with Heath, who's doing a program tonight. And then the second one's gonna be with Tina from Youth Services. And then the other one, a big update that we've been helping with is Adult Services with their Comcast and ILL circulation. We've trained some new staff members to help process this. And so that has sort of pivoted to circulation and Borrow Services. Another big update tied to readers advisory and sort of everything holistically Borrow Services has been doing is the new Minuteman mobile app. Um, it just launched May 1st for our patrons. Um, and Borrow Services, along with Youth Services and Adult Services, has been doing a big push for digital readers advisory through digital displays. Um, that first example you can see there, um, some of our featured displays. Um, we have one for Asian Flag Day, one for Asian American and specific Pacific Islander, and then one for the book tasting, romantic reads as well. Um, this is a great way to connect with patrons who are some of our digital users. Um, and what's great about the new app as well, um, you can see through the last picture here, is it shows the location like our digital catalog for both e-materials and physical materials all in one place. And with one push of a button, you can check out Hoopla items or Libby items through our main app as well. Um, so you don't have to hit that button and then you get taken to Libby and then you have to go through the process again. You just push that button and it shows it up right in the app for you to start using. Um, part of this big push for the new Minuteman app is at the end of the month, um, May 31st, the old app is gonna be start to slowly discontinued.
It's already gone.
Is the old app, yeah, it's already taken off the App Store. Um, but-
Well, it's up, it's already off my phone too.
Oh, you already have?
Yeah. It says, uh, maybe possible scam, you know, like the phone's gonna explode or something like that.
Yeah, so it's been a quick turnaround time for from the old app to the new app. Um, and sort of going with that, we've been sort of aggressive with the marketing for it. We have signs all over the library pushing it. And then to for any holds or requests patrons coming, we've been giving out bookmarks that have QR codes for both the Apple and Google Store, um, for patrons to download that app. Um, another great thing about the new app is you can see here that like our digital catalog display, you can also check out museum passes, uh, register events, all through the app as well. Um, for the old app, some patrons were having difficulty, especially depending on device, reserving museum passes or looking up our calendar through the old app. Um, we've been testing it out and museum passes seem to be working great. We've already had a few patrons reserve museum passes through the app, which is wonderful. Um, and then our brand-new feature, which is a brand-new thing we're offering our patrons, is Scan and Go, um, which allows you to check out items that you have put on request or from our library, uh, with your phone's camera. Um, you can do that in the library, or if you forget to take, uh, do a checkout when you have your hold and you get home and you're like, oh, I forgot to check it out, you can also use your app at home to check out these materials. Um, this is the first month of the launch, so at the end of the month, we'll start seeing the data for how, why the use of our Scan and Go feature is. Um, our surrounding neighboring libraries have been using it for a bit, and so we've had patrons come from Westwood that have used it here and that sort of thing. Um, but that's been a big portion of Borrow Services in the last like month is the new app and getting patrons to download it and teaching them how to use the new app interface. Um, then looking at the data from the last year and also the start of this year, um, our total circulation is sort of on par, especially now getting into March and April, to last year's numbers. Um, last year was a record circulation for us. Um, and looking at total circulation might be slightly decreased from last year, but we're looking on par with what we expected. Um, and then if you look at the breakdown, this is really, that's interesting. Physical circulation, we've seen a decrease slightly in physical circulation compared to last year, but on par with the seasonal changes as well, as you can see like the curve as sort of we have the pickup with March and April when it gets nicer out, and then the dip in May as our programming takes the pause, and then that huge spike in the summer from summer reading and our summer programming. Um, physical circulation has just seen a decrease, um, averaging around, um, 7%. Um, January, this can be especially January here, um, weather can be a factor in this. Um, we also had extended hours last January, which also played into a factor. Um, and then April, we were closed for an additional few days because of our Good Friday and Easter closure, um, compared to last year. But what's really interesting is when you look at the digital checkouts and digital circulation. Um, for Overdrive and Libby, um, we've seen a huge spike, especially in the last two months, compared to 2024 numbers. Um, we've seen, uh, April alone, almost a 16% increase compared to 2024, which really shows that like this push to go digital is happening quicker than we might have expected. Um, and that 2025 is really gonna be that turning point year when digital's gonna start to catch up with our physical circulation. Um, especially if this, uh, 16% and 11.5% from, um, March continues on into our summer months. Hoopla, we don't have the same circulations through Hoopla as we do Overdrive, but still that same trend of increasing. And what specifically to note here is Hoopla in 2024 didn't have that same seasonal curve as we expected as sort of our patron usage, whereas that power steady users we expected. Now that we're seizing, seeing that seasonal curve, we're seeing that we're reaching new patrons with that Hoopla circulation. Um, it's crazy to see that like the 1,300 numbers that we've sort of steadily saw almost all through last year are now seeing towards 1,600. Um, which is great to see, but all goes to show that we're seeing this push towards digital formatting and digital materials for availability for our patrons. On top of that, our museum pass system has also been seeing a huge spike in use. That was another push, uh, I talked about at last meeting I was here, um, was our interest in getting more museum passes because it's a really popular program we offer our patrons. Um, we've seen about an average of 20% increase in 2025 compared to 2024. Um, and what's really interesting is our April numbers, even though we had a rainy year month, which really set back some of our outdoor passes we had, almost on par with our 2024 numbers, um, even though it was a rainy year month compared to last year. Um, we have also added three passes since last meeting. Um, we've added the Roger Williams Pass, Boston Harbor Flare Pass, and the Maplewood Playground Pass in Easton, all of which have seen popularity and have helped sort of facilitate these high usage we have from our New England Aquarium Children's Museum, um, MFA passes. It's been sort of great to offer patrons an alternative if their first-choice pass isn't available, um, and really has helped facilitate this growth in museum passes. We have also converted five more passes to digital passes, which has increased in our availability and usage of the passes. Um, that brings up our total pass digital availability to half compared to only one back in 2024. Um, this allows patrons to book a museum pass, get the email, and not have to come into the library, pick up a pass, sometimes even in some cases, return a pass to us, um, which can be a dissentive for them using our museum pass program at us in the first place. And then sort of finally, and this is really where you can see how busy it's been and like what is coming for the library, is how many visitors we are seeing. Um, compared to 2024, we have seen a huge surge in the number of people coming to the library. Um, roughly on average, this is about 11.7% increase so far compared to 2024. Um, it is still following our seasonal patterns, especially this coming May when we have sort of that dip in programming with our pause before we gear up to those summer reading months of June, July, and August. Um, but based on this data, we're looking to be our busiest year yet, um, which is very exciting for us and Borrow Services. Um, that was all I had to update you. Yes.
First, a comment from a lifelong statistician. When you're doing graphs, the baseline should be zero.
Yes, so-
Because otherwise you get a distorted notion of-
Yeah, so I, I made this choice because if you had zero, especially on our visitors graph, they were essentially the same line, so you couldn't really get into those differences from February 2024 to February 2025. Um, they looked almost like they were the same line.
Still, that to my mind, uh, that's not a good enough reason to create a misleading graph, which unfortunately these are. Having the numbers on the graph helps. But, um, in the 50s, there was a book called How to Lie with Statistics. A delightful book, you'd probably enjoy it, and this was like Exhibit A, graphs like that. Um, to less negative comments. Um, have you considered doing some sample surveying of people? A, to see what, how many of them have recognized that you've got a new app?
Mm-hmm.
And then ask the ones who've used both, which parts are easier, which parts are not as easy or not as successful? Just something that emphasizes open-ended comments.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, because I don't think we'd know enough at this point to figure out what this, what the answers would tend to be.
John, I think I can actually probably address that a little bit better than Michael can because the app is a initiative of the entire Minuteman Library Network. Um, and we are just one instance of everybody who's implementing it. Um, and there is a whole iterative process. Why, we originally had been looking at launching the app much earlier in the year and had to delay it because of further developments in it. We do have a process for improvements that we still want to make. We know it's not, you know, it's, we were happy and knew that it was better than the old map, uh, app, and would not have released it if we weren't convinced it was an upgrade ourselves. Um, but there's still other, like, we know, for example, that there is a time delay. There, it can be a little slow to load sometimes, uh, and we've had multiple people report that. Uh, we've had, uh, some reports of some other crashes, and we're still very much in an active, let's get the current one just to work. And so the takeaway we'd like to hear right now, and I know Michael and this team are working on, is to get real-time feedback about what's working, um, and what do we just need to improve with the current piece. In terms of comparing with the old app, the monetary savings and the improvements, um, we are convinced are, are here in the new app, and so I'm not really interested in go- we're not gonna go back to the old vendor as a network, I can say that. So asking people to compare would be asking for, you know, giving some hope that we may return to that old app, and that's not gonna happen, so I don't wanna mislead folks.
Well, I understand your, your argument. If you do a comparison, some of the things that you stand a chance of getting as feedback are, I'm having a harder time figuring out how this works, or it's been a lot easier to learn and use.
Yeah.
And both are possible answers, and the relative size of the two populations could provide some actionable intelligence. Um, if you could tease out, uh, differentials that it's turns out to be easier to use it for this, this, and this, but I found when I started doing that, I was having trouble, I didn't use it. The more they're willing to open up about a variety of experiences, the more you'll, um, have something you can work with. If you have questions where you're worried about then misinterpreting what the possible uses of it would be, I think you could solve that with some clever wording and the like.
That makes sense. I think realistically, getting through this phase of implementation and then the known issues that we know are in the next phase for the next couple of generations of the app are gonna take first priority, and then further usability testing will come after that. Because we know there are several features that we identified when we first picked this app that we, we're still not at the, the full implementation we'd like to see. So we'd really like to get to that level and push the developers on those priorities that have already been identified and known before we go looking for others. But I definitely see the value in what you're saying. It's gonna be a matter of timing, I think, for the network.
One last thing that occurs to me is, can you identify a population that never used the old app, but they are using the new one? And so you'd be asking them, is this app making your job easier? Or it gives you more things you can do? You're not comparing it to anything that they'd be tempted to go back to, but they may have stronger comments on some things than other things.
I can certainly see the value of doing that. It would probably be a self-selection as we work on always maintaining patron privacy and not even keeping the data to know who's an old versus a new. So I wouldn't even know if we'd have the ability to discern who was an older or new user. Um, but asking people to self-identify if they're willing, that could be really interesting information.
Yeah.
One thing I found using the app, I tried it out today, was it was quicker than the website, which I, I use the website very frequently. And I didn't use the old, uh, app because it was, uh, it was bulky to me. But the new website, maybe there aren't that many people using it, so that's why it was so speedy. But I was looking for a book and I didn't find it on our website, uh, because it was slow. And it was the same Wi-Fi, my house has the same Wi-Fi. I looked it up on, uh, BPL. Uh, that was, um, I found it, and then I said, well, let me try the app. It was there. I came in tonight, you know, a little bit early, right on the shelf, took it, and done.
Excellent.
So it was, it was very nice, it was quick, and I found it to be, uh, you know, a very easy way to find things. And, um, unless I was doing some research, which I doubt it, I doubt I'll be doing that, uh, I'll use the app instead of the website. And my holds were there, and, uh, everything was right there for me to see, so I, I found it to be worthwhile.
Oh, go ahead.
Thanks for all the data, it's great to see, and, um, especially the increase in the use of digital. And, um, it's also interesting to hear about the launch of the app. I'm just curious, so what is the relationship for the library to use that? Do we license it? Is it like part of, you know, you're obviously providing feedback, however, they're collecting it from the communities that are using the app, so is that-
So this app is actually a, it's an offshoot of the new, the Aspen website, the, uh, the, this new search interface that we put on. Um, and we actually get it as, well, there was some implementation costs, but, um, when you look at other apps, we were paying a significant amount of money for the past app. This one, because it came with the people who gave us the new search interface, it just came with that, so it's-
Okay, so it's like bundled with that, yeah.
It was a bundle that we were excited to take advantage of and appreciate the cost savings. And we really like the browse categories, these, these, the book jackets that you see at the front, um, and being able to mirror the experience of browsing the website and the fascinating browsing that you can get. We really think to the search interface where this is so much richer than we were able to provide before.
That's, much easier to get personalization through an app.
Yes. And the great, from a staff point of view, um, when we're editing the catalog display, it mirrors it automatically for the app as well. So it's no longer having to edit in two locations.
Great.
For power users, I have to put out too, because I think you may be interested in this. So you can go, if you've created your own searches or your own lists and you like seeing those displayed like this, like, let's say you have a list like I do of, uh, books about fermentation published in the last 30 days. Um, you can look at the most recently published books about fermentation and, and just see them as something to browse and say, oh, I've seen that one. Oh, here's a new book, I haven't seen that one before. Let me go check out and see what next new kombucha I'm gonna make.
I'm sure there's a lot of books that show up in that category.
It's a pretty, yeah.
If you could, uh, say, just for the, the taping and all, for our home audience, what is Hulu?
Like Hoopla, the-
Hoopla, what is Hoopla?
Yeah, Hoopla is one of our digital library services, sort of in the same vein as Overdrive and Libby. Um, that patrons can check out eBooks, movies, TV shows on, and access through the Hoopla app. Um, it's not exactly the same as Libby in the sense that when you check out something on Libby, you have to check it out and then return it, um, after a certain period of time, and there's holds and that sort of thing. Hoopla, we get instant access, so we get a certain number of checkouts we're allowed for this material, um, for our patrons specifically as well. Um, and they can have simultaneous checkouts on it versus Libby, you have to wait for an item, uh, sometimes, especially if it's a popular digital item. Um, and then also in the variety of what Hoopla offers compared to Libby as well.
Is Hoopla a set of initials?
No, that's just the app name.
Just just the name?
Yeah.
And Libby is the same?
Yeah, yeah. Libby used to be called Overdrive, and then they rebranded it to Libby.
What I'm thinking here is, every one of these presentations is probably several somebody's first encounter with all these terms. And if you can find a, a way to give them a little bit more context so they don't feel like they're wandering around blindfolded in the forest, it, it helps.
Yeah, one of the most common, um, things we help with at the circulation desk is patrons, when they sign up for a library card, going over how to sign up for your first time in the Libby app or the Hoopla app, um, with your library card number and your PIN number that you get. Um, that's you, that's also one of the most common questions we get from first-time patrons too.
Yeah, me either.
I did. So now I have two things. So let me do the last thing I thought of. Um, does Hoopla, um, sort of self-collective, um, you don't turn it in? So does it, it has a time limit?
Yes, yep.
Okay. What about Libby?
Libby, it's sort of same way, you'll check out-
But it doesn't take itself back, you have to bring it back?
No, so it, at the end, so say you check out a book on Libby, you have a three-week checkout. At the end of that three weeks, it, it will return the book automatically.
Disappears.
Yes. If you, you can return it early if you finish it ahead of time. But with the Libby app, if you're not done and then it has to be returned in three weeks, if you check it out again in the future, it saves that space for you from the last time.
Well, that's good. Okay, the other thing was, when that, when Marguerite was talking about her experience with the new app. Well, I've also experienced the new app. Two entirely different experiences. Saturday, there was like a kerfluffle outside, and so I got here just late and then got participating in the kerfluffle. And so the big computer had closed down, and I had installed the new app at home and thought, oh, this is slow and I can't seem to make it move. And then it put up a thing saying, you need to update, and I assume that means I need a new phone or something, but anyway. So now I can't check out, and Michael's outside with, and so I saw this thing on the app and it said, scan and go, so I said, well, I'll give it a shot. And I took it and I held it over the thing and it worked. And I scanned six out of the seven books. The seventh book wouldn't scan right. Michael came back in, we scanned it at the, the desktop scanning thing. And, um, it seemed to work, but when I got home, it wasn't on my list. So today I come into the library and I go to check out this book. And it wants to know my library card number is gone from the system.
That's one of the known issues that we're, we're addressing, supposed to remember.
And of course, you know, I think I have it memorized, but I'm not, and I don't wanna chance it, and, uh, and so it was two entirely different experiences, but I did find it slow. Yeah, I mean, after I got going, it was-
Once it loads, it's fairly responsive. And we're trying, we're, the two big things that we want to see fixed is the, the, the memory so that you don't have to enter your library card and PIN every time you use it unless you-
Well, I didn't have to enter it the first time at all.
At some point, you entered your library card number and PIN, I didn't know you were without that. So I'm sure at some point you did.
Well, I don't, maybe I did, okay.
Um, but the other thing is, what it's doing when it first loads is it's loading all these browse categories and it's loading a lot of background content, which if you're, you know, using any other app, you realize that you get lag time kind of between screens. It's trying to, it's sacrificing, um, your initial time for, to make your later time faster. And you will find, once you're in and you've got it all loaded, it goes pretty quick. We're looking for some kind of balance, so it loads less on initial startup, so you can get a quicker experience, but enough so that most common events, uh, most common activities move quickly. But we don't need to have your entire reading history, which you could have enabled, you don't have to have that enabled, which you could. That does need to load every time you access the app because chances are, you don't need to look at your entire reading history every time you open up the app.
Well, thank you, Michael.
Of course.
Wonderful news. That's great.
So everything else I thought you said was very good, and I just wanted to complain about it, yeah.
Yeah, that, we, we do know there's a few features. Uh, the log-out one has been something a few patrons have reported. The commonality we've seen with some of them is they create their own username rather than having their library card number, that seems to be a common one. Um, but then also, it could be a factor of like, older phones seem to log out patrons more often than, uh, if you have an up-to-date phone. Uh, but this is all stuff the network is working on to get us all up to speed with the new app.
And I liked your graph, because I could understand it. Sorry, John.
I just wanna go on the record, just thanking Michael for this presentation and your leadership in the department and in the library. Uh, it is delightful having you here. I, you know, hear wonderful reports from the, the staff that work with you, uh, which is a fair number of people. Um, and your peers in all the other departments, everybody really enjoys having you here as part of the team. And we're just so happy to have you, and, uh, the professionalism, the, the joy, the, the, just the passion that you have for what you do is, is readily apparent all the time, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you are always smiling and always greet everybody with enthusiasm, like, oh, it's so good to see you.
I love working here, so it's easy to put a smile on, so.
That's fantastic.
It's wonderful, thank you.
Clayton.
Reports.
Moving into reports. Um, so on the personnel and contract updates, I have an exciting piece, actually. I don't think anybody besides Casey and I know this yet. Um, we just, I just signed today PAF's personal action forms to give all the part-time staff raises here at the beginning of the fiscal year, from July. So very exciting.
Absolutely.
Usually I wait to tell people that when they actually appreciate it in their check, but I was like, ah, gonna sign these papers today? I'll let everybody know that's, that's coming, that's really good. Otherwise, there are no, uh, well, we did receive, we haven't received written notice yet, but, uh, James Kaye is, has, is graduating. Um, is, has graduated, is graduating?
Will be.
He's graduating, June 1, yep. Um, and has let us know informally, and expect written notice soon, that as he prepares for the next steps in, in his, uh, his time at Georgetown, uh, you know, GW, uh, he is, uh, going to be having his last day here at the end of June, I believe, so. Or Joanne is actively looking at other page options. And we've been really grateful for, for, for James. And wanna wish him and his family the greatest congratulations, and, uh, we're sorry to see him go. But also super proud. Residio is also graduating from college, uh, which is kind of incredible.
Yeah.
So those of you who know Residio, you can tell her congratulations too. It's great. As far as I know, she's not, uh, giving us notice, so, yeah.
She, she's fully interested in staying with us for one more year, is what she said.
Absolutely, great. Um, the last couple of months, I brought up a whole bunch of programming things to tell you about. I would be happy to go back and collect them. I did not grab an A stack. There are a lot of great programs coming up, but there's a lot of IMLS news I thought you might like to talk about. And when we get to an appropriate part, I just got some news this afternoon, which is very exciting. So I could share that right now, if you'd like. Uh, there was an email just this afternoon from, from Book Riot, a reporter there, that says a massive, the headline is Massive Victory in Lawsuit Filed Against Trump Administration's Dismantling of IMLS, the Institute for Museum and Library Services. Um, I shared this with some friends, and a friend who works for the Attorney General is, general here in Massachusetts, said, well, to call it a massive victory when it's a temporary injunction is a little bit of hyperbole. Uh, there's still work to be done, but it's still a victory, uh, and we're still really grateful. Um, the, the first line of the article says, in what could be seen as a total victory today, um, and that's, was my friend was walking back a little bit, so I had to ask him caution. Uh, but a judge did file a temporary injunction in the case of the 21 state attorney generals who sued the executive office and President Trump over unlawful dismantling of IMLS. And there's several pieces here, I can pass it around or share it if you like. Normally I would wait till next month to share something- Normally, I would wait till next month to share something that's late-breaking, but I know we've all been anxiously watching this news. It talks about how they have to cease and desist and hire back employees, return money except for anybody who hasn't actually met their granting requirements. It's quite inclusive in its restoration, so. It's gonna be interesting to see what it does. It doesn't do anything to restore the Library of Congress and Farley Hayden, who was fired recently. There's still a lot of problems, but that was exciting news to see this happen, and I couldn't resist sharing.
Evidently, somebody seems to think that the Library of Congress is like our library, and that you can go in and take out books, and that the children are being adversely affected by the stuff that's on the shelves. They seem to have no idea what the concept of the Library of Congress is.
It's kind of in the name as well. We have a Congress that needs a library. That's what it serves.
And it has just about every book that's published in it, so it's there for reference. It is not there for people to walk in and out and take books out, or get Hoopla or whatever.
There is, one of the articles that I was turned on to recently is included towards the end of the packet, and it's from Slate, talking about, you know, even how the current president himself most recently signed off on the renewal of IMLS in his last administration. And, you know, there are plenty of presidents on both sides of the aisle that have been very supportive of libraries over the years. It's really a new departure from many, many years of history supporting libraries in this country and a disturbing trend. It's nice to see. I believe the judge you ruled today was appointed by President Bush, so it's not a partisan issue right now. But there is lots of programming. Children's, as we did mention, or Michael mentioned earlier, is taking a little bit of a break. They had a 17-week, like, marathon stretch winter and spring, now that things are nicer and people are enjoying time outside. They're retooling, they're learning lessons, they're talking with folks, and getting ready for summer reading, and everything that happens over the summer, where it gets very busy again. The summer concerts, the Sunday concerts went really well. We had a lot of great pieces. You'll see in the correspondence section. Really nice note from Fang Laura from her presentation here. There's been a lot of great programs getting a lot of really positive support from folks, yep. I guess a couple of programs that I will plug right now. We have the Pride Picnic is happening on May 30th, right at the end of the month, on-
31st?
The last Saturday of the month. Yeah. Thank you. Is that the 31st?
Good.
Corrected? Damn, corrected. And so that'll be a really fun picnic. I encourage everybody to come out. And then, yes, it, wrong, unintended. And then on Saturday, June 14th, we have the Juneteenth Celebration, which will be really fun. And we have, plans are all in order for that. It does conflict with-
What day is that?
Saturday, June 14th. Does conflict with the Boston Pride Parade, where there will be a contingent of-
It also conflicts with the other parade.
Which other parade? I'm not aware of this company.
For Mr. Trump's birthday.
Oh, is he having his Army Parade that day?
That's the day, and that's also no King's Day.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's a lot going on that day.
We will be celebrating freedom in Norway.
Yes.
That's what Juneteenth is all about, and that's what Pride is all about, too. Maintenance and repair. You'll see some pictures in my report of the crane and all the work that was done. We talked about that last time. I've gotten a couple of the reports back from the consultants, but the architects who are overseeing the whole thing, they just shared those, say, hey, you might want to look at the details. They will be consolidating all the reports from the consultants, and then meeting with us to look at recommendations for timeline and with prices for what needs to be done and when. And I expect that here in the next couple of weeks. They're always awaiting on our consultants to give them a couple pieces. Definitely by the end of this month, so next month, I expect to have much more to share on that front. And they've been very responsive and keeping us updated in the process, the whole thing, so very positive. Other issues of maintenance and repair, I think, there's irregular work orders and getting some paint patched up in some of the work. We did get a couple, Jim was able to find the same color paint, the spec sheets, so we're just doing a little bit of temporary repairs for some of the work that was done during the water penetration testing. In the visible areas, there is some space. We were originally thinking about keeping it pretty rough in the back spaces that are open to the public, and we ended up patching those instead, because we didn't want to leave rough surfaces that could potentially harm a staff person or somebody else who needed to do, have an emergency egress. So I think that was the right decision to make.
Yeah, definitely.
Friends are meeting tomorrow night.
That's correct. Yes. They had a successful book sale, a little over $3,000.
Oh, nice.
So we're, they're also looking at perhaps some other fundraising opportunities over the next couple of months, so hopefully next month, next, tomorrow, you think. We'll see what that leads to, if they have any decisions on that.
And the bags came in for the book sale.
Yes, they did as well.
Really sharp.
And they're for sale here, aren't they?
They are for sale here.
Yes, wonderful.
Michael's joining you as the liaison tomorrow night in my absence, so that's one thing to talk about, is let's get going, selling them.
That's right. That's right.
And you're clamoring for them, so.
We're ours.
Sell out.
Well, they will be at the front desk, yes.
Yes. Yeah. We just got the signage today to put them out, and then we're just waiting for the extra supply, so we can have them all pretty on hand.
Come by my office. We can take care of that tonight. They're sitting right there.
How much do they cost?
I think we're selling for $35.
$35, yes. And they're nice, heavy-duty canvas. Nobody's stress tests to see how many books they can hold yet. They can hold a lot, though.
I'm not worried about them breaking.
No, not that.
Fill them full of books.
Yeah, not big bags. Definitely not.
We also had an amazing amount of books left over. The contributions, I want to thank Lydia for working on the prison book project. I don't know how many books they ended up taking from this sale.
Really a car full. I mean, maybe, you know, it was maybe eight to 12 boxes. Yeah, I have to touch base with Sierra to ask her how many there were in the end, but yeah, that was really something, because, you know, they have a lot of criteria they have to adhere to for the books. And in that program, they work with prisons nationwide. It's not just a local thing. But they have, you know, specific kind of wish lists of things that the inmates ask for and that are popular, and then things that would not be appropriate. So it takes a little more curating, but we're very happy to have an ongoing relationship started with them.
I remember being at the program for that, and they talked about things like, some of the states or their wardens are more particular than others, and they think that, like, a handwritten thing inside a book might actually be dissolved into water and become a drug, and all these really rigid-
Yeah, they remove any, and when I was visiting there, they have like a little, a station with Goog on and some tools and stuff. They remove any stickers because of the, you know, if people are in that environment for a long time, you know, without other things to do, they can sometimes get very clever. So there was concern about things being under stickers, or there's some facilities that won't accept hardcover books at all. And also with, you know, writing and like margin notes in books, you know, there could be messages or something, so. You know, it seems, some of the restrictions seem a little bit over the top, but, you know, they can't, they just can't take chances, and, you know, it's better to just have uniform policies across the board, you know, where they work at so many facilities.
There's probably a reason for each one of those restrictions. It's one of those you thought, think you thought of everything, and if there's something, it's a surprise.
Yeah, definitely.
We also gave a major contribution to More Than Words, which I know we always are supporting, but I physically moved a bunch of those boxes. So it's great to get the support. It's great to get the community support. It's also really nice to know that we have a lot of books still. I'm maintaining the ongoing sale. It's not like we're decimated, but there are a lot of contributions from the community that are doing good well beyond the borders and orbit.
I had about 20, over 20 boxes to Better World Books. So it's important that people, you know, we're kind of a clearinghouse. People donate books to the library and the friends of the library, and when they're sold in our book sale room or in the in-person book sales twice a year, they're raising money for us to do, to put on programs and to, you know, buy supplies and to, you know, do all the wonderful things that we do. And for things that might not sell here, they end up in good hands, whether it's, you know, partnering with More Than Words or going to Better World Books and then sending the friends, you know, a check with, you know, part of the proceeds from reselling or now the prison program. It's pretty remarkable.
It is neat to see.
We don't let them go to waste unless they, well, it's not waste if you discard a book that's giving misinformation or outdated medical information.
Or is falling apart.
Or is, yeah.
Again, you name it, we've seen that.
Or is covered in mold or, yeah.
We don't want those, please.
Correspondence.
I already referenced a fair amount of the correspondence. I've encouraged people to read through. There's been some more recent correspondence. Oh, the other one that I wanted to point out, though, is related to what's happening and the implications for the federal piece on the local budget. And just, I got an update just yesterday at the MLS meeting for Maureen about where we are. The state budget is still going through the process. The governor presented a budget that was level funded for libraries across the board and for library services, and then the, let's see if I can get this straight. I think the Senate meeting reviews it first, and then the House reviews it, or it's in reverse order. So if anybody knows better, please correct me, but it's gone through one level funded. It's been through committee. It's now being considered by the other. Also, there were a whole bunch of amendments that were made. None of the amendments, and every one that related to libraries had an amendment to increase it. None of those amendments made it through to the final version. I made it through. So now in the body that is in front of, there are, again, amendments being made to add some funding to some of the library-related lines. There's websites, and I can give more details about exactly where that stands. The news today, and they're making plans at MBLC right now not to have any federal funding next year, because they can't rely upon it. While they've not said that the federal funding is gone right now, without anybody at MLS, at IMLS to administer the funds, it's like having, you know, you can find, you can have a tap, but there's nothing that comes out of it. There's no means to actually move the funding across. There's been requests, and it's just nothing is moving right now. So that input, if the state does not get some additional funds for MBLC, there will not be enough money to meet their obligatory, their state-mandated services, which they need their existing staff and their office space to do. There's not money in the budget, and you take away the federal money right now, to afford just staff and office space alone, let alone the eBooks, the Commonwealth Catalog, the databases. So it's anticipated that eBooks will be hit. There's funding. It gets kind of complicated, the funding for different eBook projects, but that could be negatively impacted by what we're seeing federally, and depending upon how things go with the state budget process. So keeping an eye on things, and anybody who would like more information, I'm happy to share, or the legislative update still stands and encouraging folks to be aware of the MLS or the MBLC legislative update, which is the blue one that looks like this, and contact folks who are in positions of power to move on it. That's where we're at right now, still. That's it for correspondence.
Fantastic. Thank you. Onto old business. I don't believe there were any committee meetings. Is there anything else that needs to be brought up?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Then that brings us, of course, to patrons in the library.
We have had, I think it was since we last met, we had one patron who we had to give a 30-day trespass because they were not able to stay awake. I repeated that they were requiring an undue amount of staff time. We don't mind if, you know, we do have a policy that if somebody's asleep, we'll wake them up and ask them to walk around, get some fresh air. We don't want, we want to make sure we're not having a medical incident, and we're not equipped to be able to put people to sleep. We're not a crash pad. We understand that somebody can be up all night studying, somebody can be having a hard time for whatever reason, and we can doze off. We've all been there. You know, we had a town meeting last night. I wouldn't be surprised if everyone's eyes may have closed. Not saying I saw it happen, but it could happen. So we understand that people can be tired, and we don't mind waking people up occasionally, as we will. But if it becomes a chronic issue and somebody can't, you know, we had this individual had one night where they fell asleep like four times between 8 o'clock and when we're closing at 9:00. It was taking way too much staff intervention. So after trying everything we could to talk to them and encourage them to walk around, to go outside, they kept coming back and falling asleep immediately. So we said, you need to, it becomes a medical situation there. We said, you need to go and get your medical situation under control, because we can't provide the level of care that you need here. So that was frustrating. It was, it was hard. We're all very sympathetic to the individual,
So when you say that, do you mean you called an ambulance, or you just told him that-
The service is narrowed or such that we called 911. Or we, we actually didn't call 911. We called the non-emergency line of the police.
I saw it in the records, so.
Yeah.
But I wondered if you, when you say it's medical, if you had called, or the ambulance did come, or?
We didn't, it wasn't an immediate, you know, it wasn't an immediate trauma. It's more of a long-term kind of thing, and it's not trying to tell somebody how to take care of their medical, and it didn't need that emergency intervention at that time. I'm sure if the responding officer determined there was a medical incident, then they would have called an ambulance, but that was not what happened in that case.
I mean, people are vulnerable if they're, you know, if that's happening in a public place, and so we're concerned, you know, and hope that somebody can, you know, find a place to get either the sleep that they need, or if it is a medical issue, then get that taken care of, instead of sort of letting this, you know, go on and on and have them continue to be in a potentially dangerous situation.
Well, they will be, because if they leave here in that same situation, then who knows where they will fall asleep and what will happen to them, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a false sense of security if we let somebody sustain that kind of behavior, too. We need to say, hey, you can't, like, you need to take better care. If you can't stay awake enough here, then there's something else going on, and we can't mandate someone to take care of themselves, but we can try to encourage them strongly. That was the main issue with patrons in the library. We've had, as Michael mentioned, we've had a lot of people in the library, so, oh, there was, before the book sale, we had an exciting time when we had the book sale set up, and we had the children, they did one program actually in the children's room, which was a fun, like, you know, a pivot in the day. We had not originally planned to do it that way, but they improvised, and that worked. And we have lots of little ones around, too. Some little ones have, need a little more attention than others, so we have your common, like, oh, there's, you know, new families coming in and helping them understand how to keep an eye on all the kids, or all the grandparents, or, you know, there's all sorts of people at all sizes and spectrums that are, you know, when they're new to the library, figuring out how things work. That's what's exciting about being in public libraries.
That's right. Oh, great. All right, then, on to new business.
I have new business for tonight.
Any new business? Search warrants? If anyone needs advisories?
We have not any search warrants. I will advise if the redbud tree that was planted last is leaking out. I'm looking forward to seeing when redbuds actually bloom.
That's good.
We'll wait and see. This is our first year with the redbud tree, I'm afraid.
Does anyone have any remarks? Anything they'd like to bring up, talk about, question? Frog people about? No? Well done. That leaves me no choice but to ask someone for a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
Ah, can I have a second?
I can.
Oh, fantastic. I'll favor adjourned. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Michael.